Okay, you're on.
All right.
Let me unmute, hang on.
All right. Welcome to the January 26th, 2021, meeting of the Stowe Board of Selectmen. With me here tonight, I have Megan Berts McMichael and Ellen Sturgis. And remotely, we should have Courtney Fresha and Jim Salvi. And then in addition, we also have our town administrator, Denise Demkoski. First order of business will be public input. If anybody has any public input, you can raise your hand and you will be recognized. Mr. Perry? If you can unmute yourself. Ross, can you unmute? You're still, ah, there you go, Ross.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
How are you all today?
Doing well, Ross.
My interest is vaccinations for the town with COVID virus. I'm inquiring about using the Medical Reserve Corps, the MRC. The MRC has trained to issue vaccines in a pandemic environment for 15 or 20 years. They've held their annual flu clinic as if it was a pandemic. The Stowe MRC practiced social distancing before it became a standard buzz term. And it's done multiple years of drive-through. So I think it would be a good time to utilize this resource to get vaccines in people's arms. There's almost 800 residents who are over 75. There's 1,400 who are 65 to 75. And those are the groups that are being allowed vaccines. Well, now from 75 and over, and sometime in February from 65 and over. I think we will do a great public service to allow them to obtain the vaccine in Stowe and not have to drive potentially an hour to go to Foxborough or Fenway to get the vaccine. And if you think that some of those folks would not drive that far, they would not get the vaccine, so now it's a public health issue. So I'm encouraging the board to get, to work with the Board of Health to get a plan that says as soon as vaccine is ready, we have a way to get it out into people's arms. And I'm more than willing to help do this. I think the operational plans that the MRC has for a flu clinic can be quickly updated and modified for the COVID situation. I talked to Chief Landry today, and he has several valid concerns about doing it in the town. But I think these concerns can be addressed if we get the right people together, we sit down and go through all the hurdles and challenges, one by one, and have a plan. So that when the vaccine is ready, we're ready. If we wait for the vaccine to be ready first, we'll add another delay that we can't afford and shouldn't impose upon our residents. So I'm asking for the board to take some action to get this started.
All right. This is, this is public comment, Ross. It's not on the agenda, but I think you and I, you know, you and I have had a conversation that we're going to be ready when the vaccine's ready. We are working with the Board of Health. Town Administrator is working with the Board of Health, and even the Board of Health put a note in this week, or last week's paper, about this. We are working together, and hopefully, we're going to beef up the MRC so that we're good to go. So I appreciate your input.
Well, is there, is there a plan on how we're going to do this?
Right now, this is, this isn't open for discussion. This is public input only, Ross. When the plan is in place, we will let everybody know, but we are working on it. So, thank you.
Good to hear that they're working on it, Tom. I would hope that, and I'm offered to help on this, and I hope to get an update at the next select board meeting.
All right. Is there any other public input? Seeing none, I will move on to chairman's comments. First off, Joe Biden and Kamala Harris were sworn in last week as president and vice president of the United States. I'd like to congratulate both of them and wish them well. Dog licenses are available from the town clerk. The best way to get them is online and visit the town clerk at the town website. And their census form should be coming soon. And last week, as I just mentioned a minute ago, the Board of Health had an article in the paper with a call for volunteers for the MRC that might be able to help with the COVID vaccine clinics and distribution when vaccine is available and it's appropriate. Please contact the Board of Health if you think you can help out. Next up, we have a report from the library director, Tina McAndrews.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Tina.
Thank you for having me tonight. I prepared a PowerPoint that I'll share with you. It's not too long. Here we go. So I'm going to start with, it will let me up here, thanks. So I'm just going to go over, you know, I'm fairly new here in Stowe as the new director, and just how the library has faced the challenges during COVID and how that has affected our services, and just some general updates about our library. So just a little bit about me, I won't read it all, but I started my career at Becker College and then subsequently had experience in public libraries in a variety of areas, including circulation and technology and reference. But my latest job prior to Stowe was as the assistant director in Leominster. I'm finishing up my master's in nonprofit management, hopefully this semester. And as you can see, I have four kids, but my favorite is my dog. And they know that for sure. So with COVID, we ended up closing the library doors on Friday, March 13th. And we had no services until June 16th, when we decided to provide curbside pickup. So patrons are able to email, call the library, or fill out a Google form to let us know when they'd like to pick up their materials. So we're still able to give them tangible books and DVDs and music and, you know, a ukulele if they want it. And we're also providing book bundles and DVD bundles. The book bundles have actually been quite popular for people who are at home with their children. We've been doing virtual programming and lots of takeaway crafts. People are really, really excited when we have things that they can take home. Per the MAP Board of Library Commissioners, we were quarantining items for 72 hours. So if we got a delivery, which we get Tuesday through Friday, or if people returned materials to the library, we put them on tables and we didn't touch them for three days. They have since lowered that to 48 hours. And we are also working in staggered shifts to minimize the amount of people in the building at one time. So just a quick glance at library statistics. Still pretty high. I mean, if you look at the last statistic, obviously, we're down 28% or more or less. However, that's true of all 40 libraries in the system because we were closed for almost three months. But online circulation of digital items has increased. And every month when I report to the trustees, it's amazing to see how the digital collections are just being used more and more because of this pandemic. So what else we've been trying to do is up our library programming, especially for adults. During the first quarter of '21, there were lots of virtual programming, primarily for children. Storytimes were still going on, music with Ed Morgan. And Chris Morrison, our young adult librarian, did story walks and a gravestone rubbing. And again, we are still doing crafts. I've launched a gardening series and monthly trivia, which is very, very, very popular. And we're going to be hosting New England Legends, and I just found out today I'll be, we'll be hosting a lifestyle and immunity wellness program. Hopefully, that'll be the first of a few wellness presentations that we'll be having. Facility updates, so we purchased four new computers for staff and a new printer. Our average age for computers was about nine years old, so it was, it was time. With the elimination of some shelving and weeding, we were able to create a young adult space so that when we are finally allowed to have people back in the library, they'll have a designated space to hang out after school. We opened up the children's room a little bit to provide more play area. We are actively weeding the collection, so we're removing some things from the collection that haven't circulated in three years. As you know, some, we'll be updating the HVAC at some point. And we have a new custodian named Ben who's been looking out great. So, you know, the building's in decent shape. We're just waiting anxiously to be able to open up to everybody. As for the outside, we removed some dead bushes in the front to provide seating, and we managed to get two picnic tables out there before the snow came. So people did end up being able to use it. And again, just basic landscaping, we would try to keep up to date with the trim, trimming of the trees, and the Stowe Garden Club is phenomenal. They come and clean out the front garden. As for funding requests and receipts, I've, I've been able to secure a few things, a few grants from local businesses. As you can see, Avidia Bank for our hotspots. I applied for a grant from ALA for a One Book One Town program. The Friends have done amazing this year. Just for Library Giving Day, they received $2,000 in donations, and you can see that they've doubled their donations from their mailing that they put out every winter. So that's, that's a huge help because they provide the funding for all of our children's programming and, and a lot of our adult programming. So this is amazing news for, for us in the library. As for the future, there was a strategic plan written prior to my time, so I'd like to update that. And I'll be sharing with the trustees some goals that have already been achieved in this, in this strategic plan. And again, I just want to try to get more money from people, don't we all? And there is a building committee that is formed for a new random library. I do have a, I am writing a grant to try to establish a, an outreach program which would allow us to serve patrons that can't physically come to the library. So that would be a really big bonus for us to be able to reach out to a whole new demographic that we really haven't been able to. And, you know, as we're growing and trying to provide more services, we're hoping that we can add, you know, additional staff as time goes on. I think that, you know, the patrons say it best. We have really wonderful patrons, especially during the holidays. They bake us things and give us flowers and chocolates and, but, you know, their words say it all, and I think that the staff has really stepped up during this really challenging time, and they've done phenomenal, and I'm really lucky that I have a great staff. And my, our friends, like I said, are really supportive, and so are the trustees. So we're, we're just chugging along, we're doing, you know, what we can during this time. I think that's it. So that's my contact information if anybody has to contact me. And we'll welcome any questions or comments that you have.
Can I say something? I just want to give you a big thank you. My family's been fortunate to take part in the crafts program. And during the holiday, took part in the potpourri.
Yeah.
Which was just delightful. So it's been so great to see how you all have been able to innovate in this pandemic, and it's just such a great resource for the town. So I really want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I would like to just say also as trustee that Tina has hit the ground running, has done an amazing job given all of the challenges she's had. And I just want to say thank you publicly.
Thank you, Barbie.
You're welcome.
So thank you so much for your presentation. That was actually great, just to see, I mean, it really is remarkable how much you've been able to do in spite of the pandemic. So thank you. On your outreach position, have you talked to the council on aging about maybe putting efforts together and, and their friends and your friends putting it together to help with the funding?
Right, that's our goal. We really need to, I, that's part of my hope with the grant is to establish a partnership with them, a more permanent thing where we can actually work together to, to accomplish this. Because I don't think it's something we could do alone, and I don't want to duplicate services either.
Great, terrific.
Jim, any comments?
No, if I can. Oh, I'm sorry, did you say Tim or Jim? You said Tim, go ahead, Tim.
I'll get you, I'll get you in a minute, Tim.
No, I think they're confused at who's speaking.
All right. Tim, go ahead.
Thanks, I'd just like to, you know, also add that the Second Century Fund, which is another independent organization in the town, contributed $6,000 to the library as part of their effort to give more library materials to the library.
Yes, they did. Thank you, Tim, you're right, they did. They, a really big part, actually, is one of the things we want to establish is a bigger library of things. So these are the items that people can check out at the library to kind of try them out before they purchase them. So we put out a call on social media to ask our community what they would like the library to purchase. And I mean, we got everything from cake pans to apple cider presses to, I mean, all kinds of things. So I'm working with the funds that Second Century donated to us and granted us to purchase these things. So just like curbside pickup, they could check them out.
Mr. Salvi.
I just want to say that I think Tina really started showing leadership in the library from the day she got there. And it was obviously a very difficult year. She's been very helpful in the building project, and I think most notably, I've already noticed that the communication between our library director and our new town administrator is very, very good. And I think that that's going to be very good for the library and the town as a whole.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Any comments, Courtney?
I'll say thank you for, for making our library better. I use the online collections a certain amount, especially right now, and, but I just, it's, it's such fun to see all the programs you're offering and, and the changes you're making. It's, it's very exciting to see, you know, you just charge forward. Hooray.
Thank you. And I just want to say, if any, if anybody has any suggestions, we really welcome those because some of the best ideas come from the community. And, you know, we can't presume to know what all of you would like to see us do, so really, anytime you have any suggestions, that'd be great.
And I'll say thank you for myself also, Tina. It's, you know, I look forward to getting back to browsing the books, being the paper pig that I am.
We really want people to be back in the library.
Thank you for doing a great job under less than ideal circumstances, as they say.
Thank you.
All right. Next order of business, we are up to acceptance of some land, which is always a wonderful thing. Donated land from Spring Hill Estates. I see that the letter is from Kathy Sfera, or would you like to explain what we're up to?
No, Kathy's on here and ready to discuss these two processes.
Kathy, I will let you explain to us what you're up to.
Hi, Tom, thanks for having me. Kathy Sfera, I'm the conservation coordinator. Just to summarize very briefly, we have tonight two parcels of open space that are acceptances that are associated with subdivisions. Both of them have been in the works for a long time. And if it makes sense, Tom, would you like me to just explain both of them, and then you can discuss, or do you want me to take them?
I think you can probably explain both of them, and then we can take them up. I think they're similar enough.
Sure. So the first parcel, and you should have maps with you, I can show them on my screen if you want to, but the first parcel is associated with the Spring Hill Estate subdivision that was approved in 2015. The parcel of land totals about 21 acres and can be, in long term, will be accessed through the Hale Corzine property, as well as through a pedestrian easement that extends out to Walcott Street and through the subdivision. This is land that abuts Stowe Conservation Trust Hale Corzine property. And as I said, it's associated with a subdivision there. The second parcel's got a little bit more interesting history, and Stephanie Grenier is here from Harvard Acres, if you want to hear from her. This is a parcel of land that the Harvard Acres Homeowners Association approached us about several years ago, asking if the Conservation Commission would be willing to take over ownership of the property. We went out and took a look at it. It's very beautiful property, includes most of a pond that is associated with the Harvard subdivision. It was set aside as open space way back when the Harvard Acres subdivision was built, and they have owned it for most of that time since, and are essentially asking if the town would take it over for tax reasons, and also, I think, because they recognize the commission may be in a better position to manage the property. It also abuts other town-owned lands. It sort of indirectly abuts the Delaney Wildlife Management Area there, just a really beautiful parcel of open space. It's about 12 acres of land, and the access would be through, again, a pedestrian easement across the tennis court parcel that Harvard Acres owns. There's actually a little trail there already that accesses this parcel. And so we have actually worked with them over a couple of years to make sure that kind of all the legal mechanisms are in place so that they can properly make the conveyance. They've reached out to all the residents of Harvard Acres, given them a chance to have input in this process. So I think we can fairly say that everybody's supportive at this point.
I've got a question on the map.
Ellen?
Kathy, could you?
Could you put the map up, please? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Kathy, do you, can you screen share the maps? Or do you want me to?
I'm sorry.
That's right, sorry. I was, I was particularly confused on the, the Harvard Acres one, just, I can't quite tell what the outline, where the outline is of what is being conveyed.
Sure. Sorry about this, the only way, the only thing I have is the packet to share. So for orientation, this is Harvard Road here. This is Kirkland Drive coming around like this in Harvard Acres, and this is Conant Drive or Conant Road. So this is the tennis court parcel that the homeowners association owns. The access will come right through here and then into this large parcel here.
Okay, so that is, the, the smaller green ones, I couldn't quite figure out what those were. Okay.
And then the town owns these small parcels here, they own some small parcels here.
So now it's just one big.
Parcel of Delaney.
Gotcha. Yeah.
So those little parcels that are marked out, oh, that's, they actually say town. It looked like they were house lots, that's why I got confused, but they're all pieces left over from the original subdivision?
They are all parcels that were taken for tax title over the years. They are all quite wet. A number of years ago, a bunch of us went out and looked at all of them to see if they had any potential for affordable housing. And I think the answer was pretty limited.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? No? Jim, Courtney, you guys good?
I have one question along the same lines. Kathy, what's the odd-shaped parcel below the one that the town has taken?
This one here?
Yes.
So that's a privately owned parcel. The commission actually had explored acquisition of it a number of years ago, and we ran into some title challenges. I think, I actually have just been in touch recently with the owner of it, who is still interested in donating it to the town. So I think we might take another run at seeing if we can figure out the title issues now that, you know, this has all come together in a nice way.
Good, thank you.
Courtney, you're good?
I'm good. I actually went on a site visit when I was on the Concom out, you know, walked the access through the tennis court parcel, and it's lovely, lovely spot.
Okay. And based on the information that we got from the Concom, they are requesting that we vote to accept the parcels, therefore, they are in favor of this. So based on that, I have no questions either. Happy to entertain a motion.
All right. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve acceptance of donated land for conservation purposes at MAP R1, parcel 27A, Spring Hill Estates, open space off Walcott Street, and acceptance of access easement.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Courtney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye, put it on mute, sorry.
Thank you. So that's unanimous?
And then the next one, I move that Board of Selectmen approve acceptance of donated land for conservation purposes at MAP R5, parcel 22, Harvard Acres, open space off Conant Drive, and acceptance of a pedestrian easement across MAP R5, parcel 24.
Second?
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I hear Jim aye, and Courtney is aye. Thank you all. And thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, I'll go back to taking minutes.
Next up, we have a discussion to vote to dissolve the Police Chief Search Committee. Denise, I will let you take that.
So it's fairly procedural. The committee met last Monday. We voted all of our final minutes and felt that our task that we were assigned is formally completed, so we voted to recommend the board dissolve the committee.
Any questions about that? You, you ready to be done with that part of your life?
I think I am ready to be done with that part of my life, yes.
Ready? Ready for a motion?
I'll take a motion.
I move this selectman discontinue the Police Chief Search Committee following the successful selection and hiring of a new police chief.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Courtney?
Aye.
And Jim?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I just want to say one thing, I'd like to thank Megan and Chief Landry and Chief Galvin from Berlin, and, oh, let's see.
Zach.
Zach, and Steve Nado, and especially Denise for, you know, sharing it and doing a fine job keeping us moving along. I think she was a little surprised when I told her shortly after she was hired that, oh, by the way, you're going to be running this. And she did a fine job, she stepped up, and she didn't step back fast enough when we made her chair.
Chair and secretary, by the way.
It is true.
Thank you very much, Denise, and thank you to everybody else who participated in that.
Yes.
I think it worked out very well. Next up, what I did is I put on a discussion of the Selectmen and Town Administrator Work Plan Goals. My intent, Denise and I talked about it, since we had a light meeting tonight, I figured we'd start it out, little did I know, we'd have a snowstorm in the middle of it. But I figured what we would do is spend a few minutes, maybe 15 tops, kind of going through how we want to set this stuff up. Denise has probably been doing an awful lot of different things, and as I look through the list, I could probably pick out 20 of them that were on various examples that we had that she's already doing. And given that she's doing her first budget year in the middle of COVID, with all sorts of rather interesting challenges and a new With all sorts of rather interesting challenges and a new job, I, I don't want to overburden her. But, um, you know, I had said that I would put this on sometime in the not-too-distant future. And so I figured we could maybe have a little bit of a discussion. Not ma- not necessarily make any decisions tonight, but how we might want to go about it and how we might want to start it. So, um, I know, I think Jim, you're the one who wanted to put this on here to begin with. Um, so I'm going to throw you under the bus and a- ask you if you've got any thoughts on it to begin with.
Well, I take it that we're just starting off tonight with like format and what we want it to look like and.
Kind, kind of like that, not voting on any, um, any work plan, but how we might want to set it up. And how we want to go about, I'll suppose, I'll say, maybe, um, getting things, uh, start to, start to get them organized.
Well, since you're throwing me under the bus, um. I'm very excited that we're, that we're talking about this and I hope I'm not the only one. In terms of format, I, I guess my goals are, I don't want Denise to be spending all of her time filling out spreadsheets. And filling out the, the, the goals worksheet every two or three months or whatever. So I don't want anything too complicated. And my general format, you know, is something like, uh. A goal, like let's say that's trans, uh, increased transparency followed by specific tasks that relate to that goal. Uh, augment the website, publish our selectmen packet every two weeks, you know, things like that, something very simple, frankly. So of these examples, I thought Boxborough, I liked Boxborough from, from when I first saw it. Um, I thought Boxborough was very good. Paxton was extremely straightforward. Um, and I thought Waylands was very good. Um, my goal here is that these are the things that in however many months when she comes up for her pers- her first performance evaluation. This is what we, um, uh, evaluate her against. Um, and I'd like it to be sort of doable stuff. I also think it's a great idea if she takes the first crack at drafting it. Um, because she's new and she has experience in other municipalities, it's almost like we've hired a consultant. She has no vested interest in the way things were done before. And I'd like to hear her thoughts on ways we can improve. I'm expecting every select person will come to the table with ideas and it'll, her draft will just be a first draft, but. I definitely want to hear what she's got to say about it. That's all I got, Tom.
All right. Yep, thoughts?
Well, it was, it's interesting because the way it read, I wasn't sure if it was goals just for the town administrator or for the board. So one of my first questions was like, what timeframe were you talking about? But Jim just sort of clarified, if that's what everybody else was thinking, like, that makes more sense. Um, I just feel, I feel like for, for someone's first year who's been here, what, four months, five? Four months? Well, she's finished the first year already, so I don't have any more goals for her because. I mean, I really, I mean, I feel like the big bullets are transparency, reviewing of our policies. Um, there's something that I would say is in the, in the, uh, era or the area of. Staff management or, or building management, because I feel like that's something that was lacking. And, um, so I really don't know that I have much more specifics to say. I feel like, um, that, that where she's heading, I mean, I guess I would say usually, like, in maybe in her second year, I'd be wanting to talk about. What are the goals other than the more almost day-to-day management things that we want to work on? Because it's easy to get caught up in, the computer's not working or the phones aren't working or we needed a new website or, you know. Um, so I, I sort of feel like, I mean, I, I do appreciate doing, I think it's important to talk about this, but I don't have anything particularly. Um, specific to, to the rest of her first year in terms of specifics.
Um, yeah, I want to second what Jim said as far as, um, liking the, the way that Boxborough. Um, so, sorry, I want to second what he was saying as far as having Denise take the first crack at it. Um, because, um, I think that's incredibly important. Um, not only because it's her first year, but also knowing Denise. I know that she's not going to, she's going to set herself manageable goals, but also ones that are going to push her too. So I feel like, uh, she's not going to, you know, soft shoe it. Um, I like the way that the Boxborough one was written. Um, when I've had to do performance reviews in the past, um, I agree the first year. Is really just getting caught up and figuring out what you want to do. This is a long-term job, this is not, it's a marathon, not a sprint kind of thing, you know? So I do think like the first year, it's really just sort of get your feet under you, figure out what's going on. Um, but moving forward, I do, like I said, um, I like the way that the Boxborough one is laid out with the separate goals. What team members are in there, um, who your point people are, what your timeframes are, what the priority is, what your target dates are. Because I do think that it's, it's easy to work from a schedule like that. Um, and to feel like you're able to, to do things like that, but it's exciting, um. It's exciting and helpful for you, I'm sure. Um, I do want to go back to what Ellen said because I also think that. Once your work plan gets set, it would be nice for the board to also be able to talk about a work plan. Because I think that we've been sort of, um, and Denise and I were sort of talking about this a little bit before. Um, we've been in a pandemic and so, you know, I came on the board and it's sort of like everything, you know, it's. I've been learning all of these things and so we have, we've just been sort of governing by response. And so it would be nice, once we sort of get through that, to be able to look at, um, bigger picture things as well, so.
Courtney?
See, hard to add all these excellent comments. Um, I would agree that Denise, um, has intuitively been doing a lot of the things that, already that, um. I think were important to pay attention to. Um, and so I'm also looking forward to your first draft of a work plan. Because I, I agree that, that, uh, it feels like you already know, you know, a lot of what's important to us. Or what, um, will make things work more easily for you and for us and for the town. Um, I also like the Boxborough and the Paxton layouts, um, for simplicity. Um, my comment on Boxborough, I really like the layout, but I don't like the six-point type. So, um, being able to zoom into it on a screen or something might help. Anyway, um, let's see what else. I, I also agree with Megan that, that, uh, once we have a, a work plan for Denise, that it would be great to have a work plan for ourselves. So that we can be proactive rather than reactive. You know, recognizing that a certain amount of our work is, are things that are, um, yearly. Uh, issues, but also that there are things that we can think about and talk about and, um, and, uh, make better.
I think I agree with everybody, probably the one I agree with most is Ellen, is that, uh, that is. Um, I think Denise is, you know, taking the bull by the horns. There, you know, she's doing an awful lot. I think I ask her at least every other week, you're not getting burned out or anything, are you? You know, and she assures me she's not and she won't let herself. So it's, you know, I'm trying to keep an eye on her to make sure that she's not taking on too much. Um, but, you know, I've been very, very pleased with all the stuff that she's been doing. And, you know, it's, uh, um. I'm happy to go along with everybody, you know, with, uh, I'll say, a Boxborough version of it. One of the things that I was actually, uh, that, that kind of came up is that the Princeton one, there's a little note at the bottom. That says, uh, the Select Board voted in favor to accept the Town Administrator's FY nineteen goals as written. With the understanding that, that it may not be feasible to accomplish everything. So that kind of go, I think falls into what we were saying is, you know, let. Then, you know, let Denise take a quick crack at it. Um, you know, I don't want to be putting additional work on you. But, um, maybe with one thought that if the board members have any one particular thing to. One or two things that they may want to make sure is included, just send them to Denise, not a list of twenty-five different things. But if you have any one or two things in particular, would that make sense to you Denise?
That's fine.
Um, and maybe set, uh, this is the end of January. Maybe the second, does the second meeting in February or first meeting in March make sense to you to try to put something together?
Sure, other one.
Um, you know, and if it slips, it slips, you've, you know. My main work, uh, goal for you is to be keeping the place running smoothly and, you know. Um, doing everything you've been doing, so it's, I can't ask for much more. And, uh. And I'm good with the, the Boxborough type format, so if everybody.
I have a, a question for Denise. So, given what, what we know about you, I have worked with you for all of four months. Um, would you, would you like to have more? I guess I would call it like a stretch goal, I mean, would you like for us to think outside of these sort of things that we know you're basically already working on? Would that be helpful? I mean, I, I, you know, in terms of your personality, I sort of feel like you are someone who's always going to be looking past what's currently on the table. But, so I guess I just ask if you want to, in terms of us suggesting things to you. Any thoughts you have for us on what you'd like to hear?
Yeah, I mean, I think there should be a combination of sort of short-term goals and then longer term. I think ideally, um, every year around this time, we will go through this exercise and plan sort of our next fiscal year. So as we finalize the budget, if there are goals that require resources, we can accomplish that. Um, and I do think it's important for the board to set your own goals, you know. Um, as you see, some of them, they talk about open space, some of them talk about economic development and, um. You know, selling buildings and, you know, poor Princeton has to worry about broadband. But those are things that, you know, the board can talk about that are sort of a larger, um, the larger picture. And then I would focus on more of the day-to-day and the, the operational goals. Um, but I think it should be collaborative, so I will certainly put together a draft and then we can discuss. And if there's things that you feel are, um, a priority of the board for me to work on, then absolutely that'll be put on there. But I think it should be a, a good mix of, um, goals that will, um, I think it was one of, it might have been the, uh, Princeton one that mentioned, um. There are goals specific that the TA works on and then there are goals that they involve the staff on and, and that's important too, so. Um, as I said, I think this, this should be an annual exercise to go through and sort of set some expectations.
Yeah, that was actually something I noticed in the Princeton one, it talks about, you know, best practices and what's the separation of duties between the Select Board and the Town Administrator? In terms of, you know, what should we be thinking of versus what are you thinking of?
Right. Yep, so I'll start, uh, I'll put a dra- draft together. Great, perfect.
Uh, Courtney, that sound okay to you? Thumbs up. Jim?
Sounds good.
Sounds good to you? Jim? That work?
Yeah, um, I actually didn't mean to suggest that this should just be a Town Administrator Work Plan. I think it's good if Board of Selectmen, um, goals and tasks wind up in there too. Because, you know, we work primarily through the Town Administrator, especially on operational things. And even on longer-term strategic planning, I think we expect her to be helping us with that. Um, so I, I agree with the way Denise framed it and I think she's got the right, um, uh, plan in mind.
So we can start out with this and then we can go on to our goals and stuff like that afterwards if that works for everyone.
Absolutely. Perfect.
All right. Very good. Uh, next up is the Town Administrator's report.
Uh, just a couple of things for you this evening, um. There will be, I mentioned it at the last meeting, but didn't have a definitive date. So there will be a public forum to talk about the future of Stowe Acres and the collaborative visioning process that the Town Department's have been engaged in. That will take place on February tenth at seven thirty PM, uh, via Zoom. More information will be posted on the website this week, so please keep an eye out. Uh, we'd love to have people participate and, um, sign onto that Zoom to see what is being proposed. Um, Tom, I mentioned it to you briefly last week, um. So we dissolved the Police Chief Search Committee, the Town Administrator Search Committee has not been dissolved. Um, and there are about five sets of minutes. About five sets of minutes that did not appear to have been finalized, so they will need to meet and, um, finalize that. Uh, to touch upon what we've all been discussing ad nauseam and what Ross jumped on to talk about, um. So COVID vaccines, um. So. To say that we are not working on it is not the case. We are actively working on coming up with a plan, um, and trying to figure out how best to move forward. Um, on the call I had with the Governor's Office today. They expect by mid-February, a hundred and sixty-five publicly available sites to administer vaccines of up to three hundred thousand vaccines a week. However, the state is only getting about a hundred and fifty thousand vaccines a week from the federal government. So they are frustrated, the demand is short. Uh, they are trying to figure out ways to make it more available, to add additional locations. Um, by February fifteenth, they're going to add seventy-one retail pharmacy sites, CVS, Osco, Wegmans. Um, they listed a whole bunch of, um, pharmacy sites that are going to be open. Additionally, by mid-February, they're hoping that the doctors' offices that are currently administering any type of vaccine will also have these COVID vaccines available. They are encouraging folks to go on the website, um, I think it's mass.gov slash COVID vaccine. You can see a map of where all the locations are. You can click right on that if you are eligible, you go through a pro, um, you go through an application, you can schedule an appointment. Um, so they're really encouraging folks to, if you need to get your vaccine, don't wait for municipalities. Because right now, there's just no plan for municipalities to get these vaccines out. Um, but we are working, uh, very hard behind the scenes. Uh, I talk to the Board of Health almost daily. Uh, we talk to the Nashoba Board of Health, uh, the Fire Department, the Police Department. Uh, we're all in communication to figure out how best to move this forward when the time comes. This is not like your normal flu clinic. Uh, the requirements for this vaccine are, uh, much more strict. There's technology and state database that's required and accounting for every vial of vaccine, so. Um, we are working on it. Um, actually, the state said today that there were some municipalities that tried to pull together clinics and were advertising it and had to be canceled. Because the vaccines were not available, so they don't want that to happen. They don't want us to jump the gun and try and, uh, get folks excited for vaccine clinics and then not have it come through. Um, that they are trying to build capacity, but they are very constrained and they are just as frustrated as we are. Uh, we did have a meeting yesterday of Lower Village and, uh, we were talking earlier that, um, Representative Hogan was there. And she was expressing the frustration from the state's behalf that, um, we're all in the same boat. We're all trying to get our residents vaccinated as quickly and as safely as possible. And we are committed to that, so when the time comes, we are committed to making sure that folks get vaccinated. Whether or not it's in this town, I cannot guarantee. Um, I would expect to see more of a regional effort within the Showa Board of Health, but that's all to be determined. Uh, but we will stay on top of it, keep an eye out on our website, um, the COVID nineteen tab, we update when we have additional information. Um. And I will definitely have more information for you, um, at the next meeting. We have some, um, meetings scheduled to try and discuss, you know, what, if anything, our response can be, so. Um, again, we are actively working on it, um, quite a bit. Um, and that is all I have for tonight.
Gaze on reports. I think we can start with Mr. Salvi this evening.
I don't have very much for you. Um, capital planning is starting its meetings. Um, there is just a little bit less than a million dollars in capital projects proposed for this year. I'm doing that by memory, so I'm hoping that that's correct. Um, which is. Which is not the, the most we've ever seen, but also certainly not the smallest. But we have not started setting up our meetings with, uh, Denise and, uh, department heads. FinCom is also just getting going. They've gotten some information from, from Denise and they're just starting to arrange their meetings with department heads. And that's about all I've got.
Courtney?
Let's see, um, CPC is still working to, um, fully understand how, uh, bonding, possible bonding of a project or projects, you know, how it works, how to approach it, whether it's a good idea. And they're, um, still, um, considering a couple of large projects, Stowe Acres and, and the Town Hall. And so they're, those two big projects are still, um, enough, still needs to be sort of clarified for them that they are not yet ready to decide on all of the projects that'll go, you know, what'll go to town meeting. The Conservation Commission, I have been, um, not paying enough attention to them, but they have, they just had a, um, a pre-application meeting with, um, about the Lake Boone Dam. So I guess, um, you know, the work is, is sort of beginning to shape up around how that will occur. That was a meeting not about, mostly about wetland issues and, and, um, working around those, not about things like road closures and some of the issues that'll also be, uh, something of a big deal when that project comes up. And that is what I have.
Megan?
I don't have much of anything. Uh, Planning Board's meeting tonight. Um, I had a nice chat with Jesse today about Stowe Acres. We looked at Lower Village yesterday on the walk. And Town Hall Restoration Subcommittee met last week and still trying to work out sort of whatever that price tag looks like. So, that's all I got.
Ellen?
Well, I have, I've been busy. I mean, my committees were all busy. So, um, just, uh, highlights, so the Council on Aging, um, just in a great example of, of municipal cooperation. When we met a couple of weeks ago, their outreach, outreach worker had had to been quarantined because of his work going into a family's home that turned out to have COVID, which put a damper on their services, but then also highlighted like, are they included in this first round? And so we got clarification from, actually from Senator Eldridge and, um, then, uh, found out also from one of their associate members that the plantation apartments was getting their, their shots or their, um, uh, vaccinations this week. And as it turned out, they had some extras. So our Council on Aging staff were able to get, um, their vaccinations this week, which was just a really nice, I mean, it's nice when that works out like that. So, and they feel better because now they can get back out to doing what they're doing. So, um, uh, Minuteman is, actually had their budget meeting tonight, which, um, I was obviously not able to make because we're here, but, um, I just wanted to highlight some things. I mean, we'll be seeing it more, but one of the things that's really was exciting to read was that Stowe's, um, enrollment has gone from nineteen students two years ago to forty this year. So we've always had this concern about how much we're spending on Minuteman. I think it's an amazing school, but on top of that, we're actually having a lot of students who are heading over that way. So I thought that was great news. Everything else, I guess we'll, we'll see as part of the budget process. I don't know that I can really explain it all. There, they do have their debt, you know, the debt services coming into the budget this year. So, that will be an increase, but their operating budget's only going up by two percent, two point four percent. So. The MAPC breakfast, legislative breakfast for, particularly for members of the Select Board, if you're interested, is this Thursday morning at nine o'clock. Jim, do you, you sometimes want to go to that. Are you on that list?
No, I hadn't seen that. Um.
I can, I'll forward it around, um, because there's still, you can sign up right up until the minute it starts, I think. So, it's so much easier when it's on Zoom.
Bring your own breakfast.
Yeah, bring your own breakfast, exactly. Um, and then, um, I did attend the, the Mass Municipal Conference last week and Denise did some, had some technical problems getting into it, but we got there. It was actually, considering it was remote, I thought it was pretty well organized. And I'll just say that the theme was, um, particularly around, you know, diversity and bringing new people to the table and I, you know, thinking that in terms of Stowe, I think one of the things, I've already emailed the town clerk. I don't know if she's on the call, but, um, you know, we need to start working on our next generation of, of volunteers and, uh, you know, we are now both, uh, age diverse as well as economic diversity and I think starting to put some real effort into getting new people involved in town, whether it's, um, on committees or running for office. So, years ago, Linda did a, like a volunteer fair. I don't remember how long I was, I, it seems like it was a long time ago. And I think Zoom might be a safer way to do that. So I'm hoping that we can do something like that to, to give people who haven't been here that long an idea of what, how many choices they have for, for volunteering. So.
That sounds like a great goal for the board.
A great goal for the board. Um, and I think, I think that was it. Uh, yeah, that's it.
And me, I'm pretty sure the, uh, highway department's out plowing snow right now.
At least you hope.
I, I hope they are. But the other thing is the, uh, um, you know, following up again with the COVID stuff. As I mentioned earlier, I off, I've offered the Board of Health and after many conversations with Denise, they know that we're committed to helping them out whenever possible. I've talked to the Chair in person. I attended their meeting, the, the last meeting they had. They ended up coordinating their press release that was in last week's paper through Denise to make sure Denise was aware of everything. So it's, uh, you know, I told them that as soon as they're ready for, to come and ask for any help, we're here, they'll be put on the agenda without any question. So if they need help, they're going to get help. So, and, you know, it's not like we're actually going to be able to do anything, but Denise is already in contact with them on a regular basis and, you know, she'll take care of anything that they need in the meantime, in between any of our meetings. So I think we're all on the same page there.
Yep.
Next up, meeting minutes. We have two sets.
I have a question. Who is doing these minutes? They're phenomenal.
So Kathy Saffara is doing the regular minutes and I did the ones for the, um, the ninth meeting. So she did the twelfth, I did the ninth.
Um, thank you, Kathy. These are the best minutes I have ever seen and yours as well, Denise, but these are really good.
Yes, they are.
All right, we have minutes from, uh, Saturday, January ninth, when we had interviews. Comments, corrections. Hearing, Courtney, uh, did you have anything or Jim?
Nope.
No, not me.
All right. Um, in that case, I'll, if nobody else has any comments, I thought those were fine. I'll take a motion.
All right, I move to accept the meeting minutes of January nine, twenty twenty-one Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jim says aye and Courtney is aye. All right. And minutes of January twelve, two, twenty twenty-one, um, they looked okay to me. Ellen?
Well, under Chairman's comments, um, I know what you said, but this didn't sound right. It, it says, uh, and he appreciates the comparison to the tragedy in Washington, D.C. last week. And I think, I think your intention was to, um, highlight the, uh, lack of similarity between our process and what was going on in D.C. So.
I, I think I, I might have said, I appreciate my companions, something like that.
Yeah.
You know, that my, I, I appreciate my colleagues, uh, on the board.
Can I make a suggestion of maybe contrast rather than comparison?
Oh, contrast, that would be the word. Yes, that's good.
Thank you. I sound much better than that.
Yes. Yeah, that was my only thing I had.
You know what, I actually.
I have a couple of things, small ones.
All right.
On page two, second paragraph from the bottom, um, rational instead of rationale. That, I believe it's the last sentence.
Yep.
Were, um, sorry, one of these pages that I, somewhere here. And, um, on page five, liaison reports, second to last bullet, um, of Tom's. He said he, he, Tom said he is not. So it's just a, uh, just typos.
Courtney, say that one again. I'm not sure.
Oh, it's the third bullet down.
Oh, it's third bullet.
Reports. It says, Tom said he is not personally in favor.
That's it.
Right.
I, I did find one other one on page three, second paragraph. End of the first sentence, candidates were very spoken. Well-spoken, I think.
Who was talking?
Uh, Courtney?
Courtney.
So third paragraph down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Candidates were very, very spoken. I, I expected it was well-spoken. All right. Um, I'll take a motion then.
Okay. I move to accept the meeting minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-one Select Board meeting as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jim says aye and Courtney says aye. Correspondence, um, the only thing I was going to mention in there was, um, the Audit Advisory Committee letter that we got. Um, I've spoken to Denise about that and, um, I expect we'll probably be seeing it on our agenda in the not-too-distant future.
Yes, so last year, the board appointed someone who was still in that role until either, um, he resigns or June thirtieth. I have spoken to him and he does, uh, plan to resign. I spoke into the Chair of the Finance Committee and she has, uh, someone in mind that she, um, would lo, is thinking of recommending. So, uh, they are working on it and hopefully we will have, um, a new candidate to fill that seat.
Denise mentioned that that's a joint appointment between the FinCom and ourselves.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
At least you know it, it's being taken care of.
And I, I guess I just wanted to highlight, there was a letter about, um, the bonding issue which came up in the minutes and, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's not on the agenda now. Um, CPC is coming to talk to us in February at some point, but I, since I'll, since Tom put himself on record, I'm on record as well as opposing the idea of bonding. So, but I thought the letter was shortened to the point, so people can check it out.
All right, so now we are, unless anybody has any other comments on the correspondence?
No.
Uh, next week, we are ready to go into executive session. And, uh, I suppose you will, for anybody that is still on here, that is not on the board, um, you will, you, you might as well leave right now. Or you can wait till after I read the, uh, notice of us going into executive session.
And may I just, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you could mention that we do not plan to return to open session, we will adjourn an executive session.
All right, so, uh, so we're going to be going into, uh, executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Section thirty-eight, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with Michael Solisi for the position of Chief of Police and to conduct, uh, negotiations with, uh, appointed Chief Solisi. And as Denise mentioned, we will not be coming back into open session. We will be adjourning thereafter. So, um, at this point, I will take a motion to go into executive session.
Okay. I move to convene an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Part Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with Michael Solisi for the position of Police Chief and to conduct negotiations with appointed Chief Solisi and to adjourn thereafter.
Second, sorry.
All in favor? This will be a roll call vote. Uh, Courtney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So all others will now be removed.